Okay, so the Rock is called meeting of the planning board order and start with the pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all. Okay, everybody's been here before, so you know where the emergency exits are and all the rest. We'll be following the rules procedures adopted by this board January twenty one. So we had the minutes of the last meeting, anybody have any issues on them? Have a motion to move the minutes, so second, then move to second, any other comments? All players can probably say aye.
Aye.
Both, okay. Legal notices are published Wednesday, January twelfth, twenty twenty-two. Our order business is in the agendas around the table over here, I hope everybody signed in. First item up is the Loomis Road Industrial Park public hearing. So what do we have for that?
I don't believe you're gonna have anybody here tonight, Chairman.
Okay.
There is a resolution, actually two, one for the preliminary site plan and then one for the special use permit to continue these out. I don't have the resolution from me, but I believe it's up to March sixteen.
March sixteen, yep.
I had talked to the applicant. I think they're trying to do everything in line, hopefully at least move one of those to probably the special use permit. They're gonna try to move that forward with you guys and then probably still be a continuation of the site plan. As they are still working through some issues that they're dealing with over in Victor. Trying to get that built and up and running before they dump into those projects both.
Okay, with that said, this is a public hearing, do I have anyone to speak for or against this application tonight? Ron.
Thank you for calling on me.
Sorry about that.
If you continue this public hearing
Yeah.
on either one of these to March sixteen. And we want to move forward before that date with either one of them.
Can do.
Okay, so I just wanted you to understand.
Right. So when we move the public hearing, it's set.
Right.
Anything else, please staff. Anybody in the public, anybody online?
We have one online, but I don't think he's online.
Okay, anyone else wanna talk about the Loomis Road Industrial Park? Okay, we're good, that's public hearing, so anybody on the board wanna talk about this?
Nope.
Okay, we have two resolutions, we have a continuation resolution on the special use permit and one on the preliminary site plan. I have a motion to waive the reading and block these two resolutions and approve them as presented.
Motion by Tim.
Motion by Tim, second by Adrian. Adrian, any other comments? Clerk take a roll call, please.
Ms. Lucia.
Aye.
Aaron Sweeney.
Aye.
Amy Dose.
Aye.
Adam.
Aye. Okay, those two are done. Next guy to move up is MB zero one zero four to twenty-two special use permit, public hearing on the safe place storage. Everybody here tonight for safe place storage? Okay, tell us a little bit about what you got going on and I know we have some continuations, we have a seeker and we have two continuation resolutions drafted, so tell us what's going on.
Yeah, like the county they sent back here or after that meeting, we're looking to just continue what we have done the original lot, which is now part of lot B, so it's all one big lot and just looking to continue expansion over the next ten years over the last decade.
Okay, and you need some variances?
We need a size variance for one building and looking to see if we can get the outdoor storage variance for some outdoor storage. Be able to come out.
Okay, so that goes to the ZVA, so Ron, I guess your X.
Yeah, I drafted the resolution for you, the special use permits, take two could commit anything affecting the environment just legislatively. And so we have those three resolutions to continue this to, I believe it's March.
March second, I believe.
Unfortunately, I made there, I didn't realize the lead time for the ZVA, so we didn't get in there, I wish, I really wish we got, I
You didn't get in for the February, did you?
Correct.
Or the January, the January, you gotta get in for the February, December. And get to here to March, okay. Okay. Any else, Ron? Dan?
All right, yeah, variances are needed, again. I know you talked to our staff, they're gonna allow you to Monday to get those applications in plus. If it goes past Monday, we'll be continuing these resolutions in March. Because you won't be on the ZVA in February, so again, it is time sensitive, you need to get those in. And yeah, so you need to make the decision, also if you're doing two variances or one variance or whatever that happens to be, that has to be into us by Monday.
And one of the other things is that if both the variances get approved, then the application that's already presented is okay, if one of them or so or both get disapproved, then you need to redo the application, get it in time to meet the time schedule requirement. So there's a lot of time sensitive issues here and Dan has got all the big stuff required, so. Any else, Dan?
No, it's, it's.
Okay, any else from rest of staff?
From the highway standpoint is the last man pilot kept did not request the truck turnaround. We'll be looking for that on there as well as adequate parking on site, so that we don't have that carton line and all up down the road. They're kind of animal sport.
Good. Engineering?
Yeah, we, MRB is reviewing the application as I've described, but obviously due to the circumstances of getting variances, I know Don has tried to reach out to me several times, I need to get in contact with Don. We, I'm just, I'm hesitant to complete a full review if variances were denied and it would require the time. There's a level that I can provide and so I'll talk to them about how far they want me to go and then we'll, we'll wait until to see what the, what the results are from the ZVA meeting and then complete a review from that point on.
Perfect. Tim? Good? Fire?
Well, obviously access would be an issue for us with multiple buildings, but I'm sure that's gonna get straightened out.
Oh, yeah. Make sure we get you some access in there. Okay, this is a public hearing on the special use permit, do I have anyone here to speak for or against this application? Anyone here or online to speak for or against this application on the special use permit for safe place storage? Given that said, I have a seeker resolution and two continuation resolutions, let's go to the board, Tim?
I have nothing. Adrian, I have one for one more for those variances. I believe he has a, did he have a variance for the other side there for all the trucks and stuff at one time too? There wasn't variance training for that?
It was a special use.
That was on the special use permit, the trucks? I couldn't remember, long time.
Ten years.
Aaron?
I don't.
Okay, so I guess the first one we wanna do is the, we have the speaker resolution, I have two actions, I have a motion to waive the reading and approve that resolution. So move by Adrian, second by Aaron.
Aaron.
Aaron, any other comments? Clerk take a roll call, please.
Ms. Lucia.
Aye.
Aaron Sweeney.
Aye.
Amy Dose.
Aye.
Aye. Actually, we have two continuation resolutions, one for the special use permit, one for the preliminary site plan, do I have a motion to waive the reading and block two and approve them as presented? Motion by Tim. Motion by Tim?
Second by Aaron, any other comments?
They're both continuations, Jim? Clerk take a roll call, please.
Ms. Lucia.
Aye.
Aaron Sweeney.
Aye.
Amy Dose.
Aye.
Aye. All right, you're ready to go. Did we need to provide anything to the ZVA, ZVA is ready to go? Okay, just wanna make sure, okay. All right, guys, thanks a lot, have a good day. Next time up, we have site plan, EB zero one zero three to twenty-two, final site plan approval, phase three A. This is an incentive zoning project we have, we have, okay, there we go.
Good evening, everybody, I'm Ryan Destro.
Hey, Ryan.
The associates, I believe online with me tonight is Chris Ciardi and Mike Serong from Land Three Enterprises as well as John LaFroyce from LaFroyce Brothers. They can answer any questions related to billing, billing user for, for this project and I can obviously provide any input for certain related concerns or issues. Since the last planning board meeting we did here before the town board and leaving the town board did amend the incentives on a resolution to allow the proposed medical use for the southern half structure.
Right.
We've also received copies of the draft resolution. We've gone through all of the conditions of approvals provided, we've provided multiple responses either in writing of how we can address all the comments and or exhibits showing how we can address the comments. We've also received some additional comments beyond the conditions of approval from several planning board members. We've also responded in time with exhibits and or written responses. A couple of the things I'd like to point out first, some of the major things that, that we've agreed to, to move forward with this project. Concerns with the parking and then the driving operations through the, through the parking lot to maintain parking or looped driving operations. We're proposing to land bank the northernmost five or six parking spaces along three thirty-two as well as the southernmost five parking spaces. Therefore, any cars that come in this drive out will be able to traverse down the next drive out to the south or from the south to the north. Also we've also agreed to provide an additional looped asphalt driver to loop the southern two direct, can you guys see that or is that too low?
It's a little low for, just by the seat.
Is that better?
I had it, but I was just trying to come along.
So we've also agreed to provide an asphalt area for this turnaround as well. There was comments about the burn along three thirty-two. Now, one thing to note that burn, I do not believe is required for town code. We have offered it in response to KRC comments that we received. And one of the comments was regarding whether the DOT would approve the burn within the right of way. That's the only area that allows enough width to go get up to two foot height. I did contact the DOT today, they did respond in an email saying that it would not be an issue and they would be in favor of, of permitting that. I did provide their email response as an attachment in one of my email responses to the board and the planning members. The other thing to note, the northern six parking spaces, those were on the approved preliminary plans. I should say basically everything that is included in this application is in general performance with the approved preliminary plans. Nothing has been added or moved without input or recommendations from the board or town staff. We did receive town staff comments to eliminate the northern six parking spaces. The applicant has agreed to do that and in, in, in return, by removing those six spaces, we'll provide an additional landscape area on the north side. What we'll do is we'll continue the foundation plantings which are on the east or front side of the building along the north side, we'll push the sidewalk north a few feet or accommodate the foundation plantings. And then we can also offer a third tree, so we'll have three trees across the frontage on the northern side of the building. Another comment that we've, that we believe we've addressed to is the comment for the fourteen foot wide drop off zone. We are showing a ten foot wide drop off area in the rear of the building, however, there's a thirty-four foot wide proposed pavement that we're providing, so instead of the two twelve foot drive out lanes we're proposing now, two ten foot wide drive lanes, we're still complying with town code requirements for a private road and then we're able to provide a fourteen foot drive or drop off zone. The other comment was to provide additional landscaping in this northern green space here. Unfortunately, there's existing water rings, sand derris or storm sewer and then existing electric from lake pools just south of these existing pavement. The area where we can drive another additional tree is in the center of this area, roughly in this, this location. There was on the preliminary plans and the phase one plans, there is currently a stone shrub landscape area and it's, it's basically like shaped like this. What I believe happened was, it was, it appears that it was installed just south of where it was shown in the approved plans. So it does project into where the future pavement area of, of the future phase three B pavement is what the applicant has agreed to with the site plan operations for phase three A is to just adjust that into the area allowed between the proposed future phase three B pavement and the and south of the existing Cameron's Way pavement. I believe those are the major points of concern. As I said, I believe we've provided written responses and or exhibits to address, showing that we can address any of those town comments. And we're hoping to be able to proceed tonight with additional site plan approval.
Okay, thank you. Ron?
Yeah, drafted a resolution with a number of conditions that were based upon the original submission. I know that they have addressed some of those comments. I didn't review anything other than that original submission, so that's what I super fear for the planning work to consider tonight.
Okay. Thank you. Dan?
Yeah, I've worked with the applicant's engineer over the last year quite a bit, taking the planning board's comments during their review of the staff comments and getting back and forth. A lot of information has gone back and forth, a lot of information has been updated per those comments. At this point, I don't know how thoroughly the board or even all of staff has, chances might have said he only reviewed what was submitted when he did the original draft resolution with all the conditions. I will agree with Ryan in regards to the code compliance of the fourteen foot zoning or area behind.
Loading zone, yeah.
Yeah. Dropping down the driveways to ten feet, code says non-dedicated private roads can go all the way down to seven foot drive aisle. So we're still a way above it, it's, and there's plenty of room for that, so that's, that's to take care of. And on their original draft resolution number nine about the complacency with the proposed parking with the amount of numbers, that is compliant after doing the code review on that as well, so. I do know the applicant has addressed many of the conditions already and many of the conditions or concerns that we have gotten in back and writing, back and forth. But like I said, it all has come in as a late and I know that this board likes to have some time to review and not like things given the day or the day before, so with that being said, I, I do think we're in the right direction, but there might be still some outstanding items.
Okay, thank you. Don?
Couple of quick points, Ryan, that mentioned that stone, I'm gonna call it the stone weed patch along Cameron's Way.
Yeah.
Because that's what that often ends up with, and I don't know what the planning board's good opinions could be of this, but as long as that thing had to be moved anyway, it may be great better appearance if that could continue to be mauled with the stone and weeds or not, because that, that pretty much ends up with rocks and full weeds since, since that was brought in and came into play. Then the only other point that I was gonna make or suggest may be cost effective for you folks if instead of placing that topsoil storage area there, if the low level burn along the trail at the south end were to be continued back and quite honestly, could continue all the way back around the west side of the, the storage units there and continue that burn right along the hedge row on the back of the water retention area back there, it would be placed once and not something that you would have to have the cost
To allow you to get rid of it.
Second, second time.
Allow you to get rid of that the topsoil without having to take it off.
All, all the way by the west edge of the property there where that hedge row is, that's burned somewhat now. That burn could continue over toward the east just a short ways and then that would just simply be a mobile burn. Topsoil would be gone and not a you know, a cost effective way of getting rid of it at one time.
What, I'm sorry, what are you talking about?
I'm talking west of the storage units.
Oh, maybe.
Way back by the trail.
Yeah.
There's already a burn with a hedge row there, my thought there was that hedge row for that burn to be continued to the east a little bit and roll it down where that water retention area is.
Which are often done by the one west or the south side also.
A little bit along the south side kind of segregates the trail from the so, from the project where, where conducive back there.
Sure. The topsoil, I should note, on site is rather limited, so whatever is there, we'll be able to use and convert as we can, and we did some test bits recently, basically there is no, two test bits up on the northern portion, roughly zero topsoil there, there are these two tap, two test bits in the, in the southern portion here roughly around six inches and then like there was like eighty-two feet of dirt here, so. Topsoil is limited on site, we can certainly use it and apply it around the areas.
What's dealt pays for
Yeah.
for, you know, to restore, that would give the place a cost effect in one place to, just falls on it, watch, you know.
I, I think their big concern, Ryan, is that the plans do show a topsoil storage area right along Carmen's Way during construction and obviously their thoughts are if you're just gonna put it there and then have to move it again or take it off site, maybe use it someplace else on site and only have to move, move it once instead of having it stored in file somewhere.
Correct. I mean, one of the first operations would be to just push it forward to the, to the right of way to get that burn set up, whatever's left. Topsoil, the topsoil temporary stuff, topsoil stacked by location was shown here because it's the most practical location where if there was excess, it could be removed easily rather than on the southern portion of the site. And we wanted to avoid any of the proposed phase three A areas, so we were putting on the only two areas are northern portion or the southern portion, future phase three B. I don't anticipate other topsoil, I don't anticipate it being there for any, like the period, obviously that's one of the conditions of approval here, so. It's literally removed prior to C E O.
Okay.
No issues with that.
And I know that John LaFroyce, I don't see him on tonight, but I know we've worked with him on other projects with piling and stuff and he understands our concerns about not having stock tiles in any place very long.
Good. Okay, anything else, Don?
That's it, thank you.
Lance?
Well, I want to apologize to the board and to the applicant because this application was forwarded to MRB group due to the holidays and the coronavirus. I just unfortunately had not had a chance to complete a review. I have had a conversation with Ryan, I've had a conversation with the town. I don't believe, oh, I have reviewed it, I just haven't issued my comments. I have a couple of questions for Ryan if I could.
Please.
Ryan, question for you is all the drainage that's proposed, is that all the drainage improvements that you're anticipating for full buildup now in the future phases or is there gonna be additional unless that you think you may be proposing in the future?
I, there may be one additional one right here in future phase three, three B and I think it was proposed to be installed with the first section, I, I believe they were, we, we haven't proposed to be all installed, maybe one minus one or two.
To me, as shown, it looks like you're proposing to construct all the improvements that you're anticipating at least at this time. Are the pads of the, the way the grain land is shown, it looks like, are you planning to create out the sites for each of the future pads and put the pads in or are they just gonna remain?
We're, we're not gonna put the pads in, we're gonna level them off at a good freshment elevation and then the future phase three B areas will be seeded and grass established until such time that those site plans are ready for construction.
And mowed, right?
Yeah.
Um, one question I did have was with the parking in the front, this is more for the planning board and staff. Is that you have a curb, it looks like a very walkable curb potentially on one of the parking aisles. I don't know if that is transversible or not, but my question is, is industrious parking in the front parking getting and they wanna walk to the building, is there a designated park pathway for them to go or are we just anticipating them going to the parking lot? Again, not necessarily required, I'm just curious to know if they intended to get on that walkable, what appears to be potentially a walkable curb. Is that curb that I'm referring to is your central parking lot area, what is on the, the north side?
Yes.
Yes.
That's, that's landscaped with shrubs.
Okay.
So the intent was people on this drive out will just walk.
Okay.
The drive out.
Gentlemen?
Yes, sir.
Hi, guys, how you doing? It's Mike Serong.
Hey, Mike.
I just wanted to touch on a couple of things and I apologize to go jump in earlier, but I was having a hard time with my microphone. In regards to, I, I'm gonna go back a little bit, I'll start with the six spaces north of the building. Absolutely fine with getting rid of that, I know it was approved much earlier on in the process, but to be honest, if you're looking at the bigger picture, I almost look at that as, could be kind of dangerous, people backing up and coming around the backside of the building or what have you. So that's kind of an easy choice to make. Don, I couldn't agree with you more in regards to the stone ugly weeded berm, if you will, along Carmen's Way. I did not realize it was gonna turn out that way, I, it's terrible looking, it's terrible to maintain, so I agree with you in terms of simplifying that and moving it to wherever it is you guys need it. And I also agree with if we can find a spot to use the excess soil so that we don't have to continuously move it around. That makes a lot of sense as well and I'm fine with whatever, location wise, if there's a preference or something you guys would prefer, again, whatever you guys want to do, but I, I agree with that, it's just obviously looks better and cuts down on costs of hauling it out and if there's places that need it, let's put it there and leave it alone.
Good. Anything else, Mike?
No, I think I'm good, thank you.
Okay. Lance, you good?
I think I'm good, thank you.
Tim, anything?
I'm good.
Fire, anything? Okay, let's go to the board, Karen?
I'm for the idea of having a berm on the south and the west side, like you said, if there is usable topsoil. I, I think for whatever you do have, best spot would be south on the south line along the, in the picture, starting, starting at an access road going to Cameron's Home and working your way west as far as you can. Keeping the trail, on, on the west side of your property, that's all trees, so that's already covered where this south side.
And we're certainly open to, to adding some here, the, the only restriction with this area is only five to six feet wide, so in order to have a mobile slope, you wouldn't really have to more than a foot, so.
I think we're talking more along the storage units.
The southwest corner of that.
Yeah, starting there and going down along the storage.
On the west.
Okay.
West along, yeah, starting there and going west along the storage units, give you some blockage and storage units from the trail. It's just someplace to get rid of the topsoil, it's a cost effective, like Mike said, it's cheaper to do that than to haul it off site. Anything else, Aaron?
Oh, yeah, thank you.
Adrian?
Few concerns, we brought up with Doug's comments and the layout change now is I'm happier with, I'm, did they have a concern with the I'm happier with, I'm, did they have a concern with the garbage reception, like the dumpsters there? How you have them right parallel with the building and the first plan, they were turned a little bit, so the trucks would be able to get in, unload them and stuff. Is there enough room there for a garbage truck to get into that enclosure and dump those dumpsters? Cause on the first plan, and I don't know if this is the first plan, this plan here I have shows it at an angle on that, so it'd be come in and. Come in from behind the building, pull up. And dump them and then go back out around the front, and I just didn't know if there was enough spacing in there for a dump truck or garbage truck, I'm sorry. To pull in there, dump the dumpster and then back out safely without hitting the building or causing problems.
Yeah, so um that that building was less long and deeper. So this building is a little bit more, it's narrower and a little bit longer, so that just cut down the room slightly in here. And then in order to provide landscaping on the backside, we really can't turn it more. But what often happens is, well, the truck can park here and then the driver can pull the. Pull the actual um tow, or not the tow, it's about the bins out.
Oh, no.
So then I've seen that um at multiple locations, obviously, it's it's easiest if you can hold straight to them.
Yeah, well, that's like.
If I still have to get out of the truck to open the gate and everything, so.
Okay.
Um there is room to to pull them out slightly so that he could access it um from from the rear driveway.
And that's still all enclosure, whatever, too, whatever.
It sounds good, but I I would say during the winter, that's gonna be a pain for the driver to be moving those second ones and stuff like that. You might consider if there's room to move them a little bit, Kitty, you know, to angle them just a little so the truck can get in there. It's just gonna save save you a lot of trouble, so why not not even then empty a couple of them because they can't get in there? It's just a thought, I mean, you know.
Oh, wait a minute.
So there's something to look at, okay?
The parking at the end of the building there where you recommended that other tree or whatever, like Mike said something about removing that, I was a little. Nervous about that too because of it backing right into the main driveway that goes through the whole property behind the building. Those six or seven spots at the end there, like Carmen's way is it, like, or it's not Carmen's way, it's part of the driveway.
Yeah.
Um. I don't know if we need all those spots for coverage because of the building or not, I guess we have to figure that out.
No, you're you're good on spots, uh with those three or six removed, with the three trees going in place.
Just grass it and go, I mean, I would be okay with that, that's, I don't agree with them, I don't agree with the rest of the board, but I would think that would be safer, nobody really parks there. Um the other couple of things I had was, um I would want to see some better renderings of. The back of the building and stuff, like doorways and stuff, I'll probably think it might be on the back of the building.
Yeah.
Um and color, I know we got this color printout, but kind of what the colors are gonna be of the building.
So.
And was there three or four John doubts in front of it? Cause the one showed four and one showed three.
Four.
I may be up. So this is, this is very.
Yeah, and these are the updates that were emailed today.
Right, but this shows like a plain back with this wall's all sewn, so you're gonna, you're gonna tell me there's gonna be no doors out there?
Oh, I'm not gonna tell you that.
Okay, so that's all I did, I'm not saying they're gonna be exact, but you know, is it gonna be two doors here and then a whole wall or, you know, I mean. So that just maybe a little more clarity on that, um. And then the end, you know, we hear that. So just little things like that, um. And then the rest of it would just be what colors you thinking, like this cream or color maybe, if it's kind of rendered here, I don't know if that's what he's meaning whether or not. Um cause we usually ask for the like some kind of sample or some kind of real color scheme. Um and the parking spots would be double striped or whatever, correct? I don't know if I saw it on there.
The verb though.
Well, it'll be double. Um I did it on, what's it?
Go ahead.
Guys, I'm sorry, when would you need um coloring samples or what have you? I I'm pretty sure, and actually I see uh LaFroy's hopped on, I don't know if that's a separate meeting I need to have with John to kind of sit down with him and. Over materials and coloring or not, but is there a a date with headline?
We would, we would like to have it for the next meeting when we're gonna do the approval.
If you want a final approval.
Yeah, final approval, we'd like to see it done and. Dane can tell you when that will fit in probably with the second meeting in February.
So, just so everybody knows, um we would need this information turned into us by February second. And then we'll put you on the meeting for February sixteen. Um so that's about two weeks from now, having all the information turned in, so the staff can review it and the planning board can review it. And have ample time before the meeting. Uh so that we can hopefully be closer to this board making a decision for approval or denial at that's February sixteen.
You get it, right?
Yes, thank you, I'm writing it down, thank you very much.
Okay.
And then Mike, I had one more quick question for you, um. It looks like with your mini storage stuff there that you have temporary U-Haul storage bins or something out there sitting?
Oh, please, yes.
Can you elaborate why they've been there so long or what's going on?
I, you know, I wish I can give you an answer, um my assistant who was there. Uh now she's more so working from home. Uh dealt with a tenant who needed those dropped off and the tenant also. Was trying to get rid of them the same day as they were delivered, cause you're just gonna unload them. Uh so that is an issue that both myself, my assistant and the tenant are dealing with U-Haul to come and pick them up. As we were all under, under the, excuse me, the understanding. That U-Haul had said they couldn't get it the same day, but maybe within like a day or two. Well, it, I don't remember exactly when they were dropped, but I know they've been there.
I'd say they've been there.
Way longer than I personally want, I mean, I'm I'm done with U-Haul's, fine, if you leave them there for a day to unload it, cause you're moving, I get it, that's fine. But, so now all three of us, if you will, and now obviously you guys are on the same line with everything, we're just dealing, and actually I have an inside rep. At U-Haul that is helping me get this straightened around.
Okay.
I could be honest with you, I completely forgot about it until the last couple of days where I've been there all day long plowing, and quite honestly, they're in the way.
Mm-hmm, yeah, you just see them from the road, so I was just trying to figure out what happened there, so.
I will touch base on that again, and um you know, I can reach out to you guys, we've been swinging through.
Yeah, let Dan know what's going on with the status, okay?
Yep, will do.
Thanks, anything else, Dave? Tim?
Yeah, I I've read through all the questions and all the responses, uh also understand that the. Directions made to the. Silent, I would say, plan amendment here. So I'm I'm good with um responses and these changes. But I know there's another eight that we want to talk about, right?
Right, yeah, um anything else, I didn't, I avoided this a little bit.
No.
Okay, so what I did is, I saw the comment second fork, Ryan, and I appreciate those, and I appreciate your quick response to to some of them. So in in calling the board and seeing where we stood, I know there were serious issues with. Parking and some other things, and you seem to have addressed that. But I came with that last email that you commented on the, I came up with eight items that. What I am proposing is, is that we do a continuation resolution. With February sixteen with the eight items that we have there, and you have already commented on these eight items. But this will help us get a completed set of drawings, all the changes or if any can get on them. And then Ron can turn around, write the final resolution approval with hopefully less than twenty eight conditions. And uh we can move forward with this, so. Uh you've seen the conditions that I am proposing, it's, one is to update the landscaping plant. Um along with, and you've got the approval from D O P to put that firm in there, and by the way, I think you should go buy a lottery ticket since you got that, I'm shocked with that, to be honest with you. Um uh having only done this for twenty five years, I'm still shocked. Um showing all the parking and circular motions, you're down, you're doing that. Um you got the fourteen foot loading zone, um putting some representation of some. Doors on the back of the building with some type of covering over them so that the icicles don't come down and whack somebody's head. So when they go off the back door, it's just gonna be a little cover over them type of thing, we did the same thing over at Myers. Um. Uh we'll, we'll add a note in the final resolution, then maintenance of landscaping will be required for the life of the project, that gives Dan some. Leg to make sure that landscaping's taken care of. A binder issue um is one that I'm not sure, like, I understand it's a height issue. You're gonna put the binder right up to the normal height and then you're gonna have to. Paint over top of it, you're gonna have to do something about getting that down. Uh and then uh the original issue with the original draft, all the issues there. And then understanding that all landscaping must be completed and excess topsoil removed from site prior to the C of O, which we've all agreed. So I assume you don't have any problems with those eight conditions?
No, I just, can you provide further clarity on the? Required for the life of the project, what does that mean, the life of it? What's, what does that mean again?
That means you're gonna put landscaping in and. Two years, three years, four years, things start dying out, they gotta be replaced. What we don't want is things to be dying out and let letting go or get weeded up and and uh we've. We've seen some issues with that on other projects and that we want to make sure that we under, that. Owners understand that we want this landscaping to look good for the life of your project when you have your tenants in there. Understand all of those?
I do understand, I want to touch on that as well, um I know we've gone back and forth with previous landscaping battles. Um I was pleased, although it took some time. Uh but I was pleased with the work that I recently had done to everything. Um they're a much bigger company and actually they. Will be getting hired for this upcoming season as well. And uh it's been discussed, they will be drawn out on contract that all that stuff is to be. Maintained and what have you, as opposed to previous poorer companies I've had. And the people I've been dealing with in regards to. The dead trees, getting them out of there, not being replaced and and all of that, so. Um I'm hoping we will not have these issues in the future, as I do believe in the company that I use and will be hiring for twenty two. And hopefully everybody's happy.
Great, I'm glad to hear that, Mike, and I know you had some battle up there and hopefully you. You got a good, good contractor now, we we look forward to that.
Yeah, it's, I mean, I'll tell you, it's Josh Landscaping, I think they do a pretty good job.
Good, cool, um the other thing, I just, since, there are a couple of things I just want you to to remember. The number of spaces that you have in the current lot is enough. Even with the bank parking to handle the current proposed use of the building and any future use of the building. One of the things we have applicants a lot of time look at and go, well, this is what we're putting in there, so we don't need much parking, well, what if it changes to. All retail or all restaurant space or something like that? We need to have the parking lots capable of handling whatever goes in there today. And whatever's gonna be there ten years from now. So that's the other side is to be very careful what you put on the lots three, on the three B phase. When you build out those two pads, make sure that not only your current parking will be met. But whatever could go in there in the future. Um I guess one of my pet needs is making sure that the parking handles future uh changes to these spaces, so just keep that in mind as you move forward.
Yeah, I agree with you, and I'm hoping um along with my broker that we can get some activity. Um. Much sooner now that they'll be seeing the construction of the plaza itself. Um so yes, that information will be passed along to my broker.
Good.
And obviously we'll have to come to you, come that time anyway, to put them in, so.
Right.
Go over there and make sure that we meet all the requirements.
Appreciate it, Mike, just make sure too, when you get that stated, you keep you keep those parcels mowed as well.
Oh, come on, you don't like when it looks out of control?
Just wanna make sure you remember. Okay, so what we have to do is, we're gonna create a resolution to continue to February sixteen, this application. With these eight conditions, which also include the other twenty nine uh conditions, um. Is that, is the board okay with making that resolution? If John has got the information to create the resolution? So do I have a motion to create a resolution um in that matter? So move by a second, Mike.
Click right there.
Tim, any other comments? Quick take a roll call, both please.
From Lucia?
Hi.
Erin Sweeney?
Hi.
Adrian, those.
Hi.
Ed Henry.
Hi. Appreciate you guys working with us, I appreciate the back and forth of information, I think now we put it all in together, we do it on the sixteen, we'll be able to knock this thing out. I don't see any long poles in the tent that we look for, okay?
Perfect, thank you all very much.
Thank you guys, have a good one, thank you.
Alright.
Okay, next item up, we have some letters of credit release, we have four of them, everything signed, see if they're delivered, gentlemen? Good. We're good, do I have a motion to waive the reading and block those four letter of credit releases for honor metal?
And approve them.
Aaron makes motion, second? Second by Tim, any other comment? Quick take a roll call, both please.
Hi.
Erin Sweeney?
Hi.
Will you do that?
Hi.
Ed Henry.
Hi. Next item up is the ninety day extension, Loomis Road Mini Warehouse, Ron?
Yeah, uh great, it's submitted. Submitted the final drawings for review back in early December. And uh some people decided they wanted to catch COVID, so they weren't, you know? Couple of them there, but. So uh it, the the deadline is going to expire before. There are next meeting. This is just precautionary, they don't anticipate, or I haven't heard of any. Problems with signing the final drawings. It's just that procedurally, if something goes awry, then we're covered.
Perfect. Ron, if I may, they they are trying to address the remaining M R P comments on the Loomis Road Storage, they've got that correct, he's aware, he has our letter on that. So I'm not saying that's the reason for the delay, but I know that he's working through those comments.
Perfect. So do I have a motion to uh approve the ninety day extension for Loomis Road Mini Warehouse? Second by. Aaron, any other comments? Quick take a roll call, both please.
From Lucia?
Hi.
Erin Sweeney?
Hi.
Will you do that?
Hi.
Hi. Okay, last item um on the uh other board action is establishing a letter of credit for farming comments, Ron?
Yeah, uh they've got the uh engineers desk within, it's been reviewed by Dave Orient and Lance. Uh everything is ready to go. Uh hopefully they'll get this letter credit taken care of. And be able to have the construction meeting here coming up. Of Orient.
Perfect. Okay, do I have a motion to waive the reading and approve the establishment letter of credit for farming comments? Move by a second, bye. Aaron, any other comments? Quick take a roll call, both please.
From Lucia?
Hi.
Erin Sweeney?
Hi.
Will you do that?
Hi.
Ed Henry.
Hi. Okay, we're on to open discussion, Ron?
Okay, I've got three things, um number one. County has recommended approval of the adoption of the contract to plan update for twenty twenty one edition. Uh nice, flowering, favorable, accolades come back in twenty twenty nine, which. Are great, I mean, you really did a great job.
Good.
Uh the the solar local law is another approval, um. Both of those, the solar and the comp plan are public hearing, uh next Tuesday night is on board. We're ready to finally move forward and adopt those and. Do it in a friendly manner so that the moratorium on the solar will end on February tenth is currently on.
Open the floodgate.
Yeah. Um we did have uh another. Uh thing, and that is the Farmington Market Center has committed a proposal. has committed a proposal. I have looked through it with Lance and Don and Dan. We have some tweaks that we wanna make to it, which we'll send back to them tomorrow. Basically just clarifying what they're talking about is in the way of amenities um, for the project. I don't see any major hurdles there, the biggest first is going to be, uh, making sure that everybody moves forward in concert with what's going on next door with the, uh, the Freud class.
Right, and you guys look at all those incentives, making sure that they're not actual requirements, code requirements that are, that are trying to slip in and incentive, I know you guys wouldn't let that happen, of course. Okay, any other problem?
No, that's, that's it for now.
Cool, Dan?
All right, uh, your next meeting, we have, uh, Myers coming back in front of you, uh, for amended site plan to talk about their sign. They came in to install the sign on the building and I, uh, stumbled across and realized you guys never approved it. Uh, they couldn't do the normal fashion because the sign's bigger than code. So they either need site plan approval or they need a preparing. So if you approve it on site plan, so they're coming in to amend their site plan with the sign, now all the elevations had the sign on it when you guys approved it, but there was no
verbage. There actually was verbage, it said it did not, it wasn't their verbage that actually said the sign is not approved, there will be a separate site plan application.
Uh.
The condition.
So that's why they're coming back in, um, they're just looking for final approval out there, certain sign we want to get up out of the building. Uh, they were hoping to do it in, uh, when the next weather was during the, uh, undercity suburb beginning of January, uh, but we sort of put stop to that, so now they're coming back and, uh, looking for your guys' blessing on the sign. Perfect, uh, the other one that might be on is the final subdivision for Rushmore uh, road, uh, that was a four lot subdivision, you guys did the preliminary. Uh, we were contacted today though that the owner might be just selling it as they completed one lot and not subdivision, so we're trying to get to the bottom of that and so it might be, or it might not be, yes, you're good. Um, with that being said, um, you have to continue everything else into the year of the second reading in February or into March. Um, so if your next meeting might be a good meeting and you're not gonna have a special meeting for your organization
Perfect.
to possibly go over that and try to get your rules and procedures approved.
That's a rule plan in this. I do have a question for you though, the hotel on the hill there, how's that coming?
It's not a hotel, it's.
Well, that's true, but it's lodging now. It's now special lodging.
Uh, they were behind on their special use conditions. Uh, we met with them and they have met, I would say ninety-five percent of the conditions, some of them was weather related, they can't go into spring. Uh, so their, their direction, um, their signage has been switched over to for a conference center and the lodging, um, they have come back in front of us to upgrade some of the uh, apartment or lodging facilities, uh, to make them a little bit nicer inside, so they are doing some upgrades, which is good, uh, they were able to get coming in from the bench. Uh, so I think.
Crown Center's going good, or?
I don't think they're doing much for them. Uh, be perfectly honest, it looks like they're using most of just the lodging. Uh, I think you can still do conferences there, but I don't think they're actively pushing that right now.
Okay. All right, anything else?
We gotta change the, the, the.
Well, that's for the money back of this contract.
That's all I got for that.
Eric Pauls, sleepover there, I think?
No, it's okay.
Don, your last meeting.
Basically from the highway, hard standpoint, it's normal winter business, basically the snowflakes, when we get them, maintenance on equipment, picking tables, so on and so forth, uh, when we're not chasing the snow, moving out, Aaron, tell the kids to enjoy the snow in the center of the cul-de-sac.
We, we have this.
It's waterway and that's there too.
I'll, I'll post the kids. Make sure you get it, oh, Jesus.
Uh, from a personal standpoint, I've been working with you folks for the last six years on basis here. Uh, I'm not gonna be going too far, I'll probably be sitting in on the back of the room as I said, just to keep from going stir crazy, there's something to do on a few weekends, but, uh, uh, my suspicion here is Timmy's gonna be especially gonna be taking over, I'm sure he'll do a, a good job working on this as well.
Yeah, Gary's not coming anymore, we need you to come.
Hey, Gary.
I'm supposed to be cleaning the sidewalks, but it isn't going right now.
As soon as I can walk to my camper and I, if I not be too wet, I'll put on sidewalks for you.
Well, Don, I'll let you go on record saying it's been a pleasure, uh, we appreciate it, it's very important, I believe, that we get your input, uh, with so much going on with these site plans. So much, uh, happening, there's so much going on, there's so many due, um, things kind of happening and the whole highway department, parking and all the rest, we appreciate your input. Been a pleasure.
I, I'm sure Timmy will carry on.
I'm certain he will, I'm certain he will.
That's definitely.
In spite of your doodling, I'm sure he'll do a great job.
I, I always accept that the guy who will play, my son.
Land.
We're gonna hold you to that time. Come to the room and bite your tongue.
Why, why does Bert appear, see what kind of sale that we have with?
All right, no, uh, it's, I mean, I don't, I don't have anything, I know that we have a number of pre camps that will be discussing that I have to talk, you know, about after, but otherwise I think we're, I'm pretty good for myself.
Perfect, Tim, any, any?
Um, I hope any guys know how to do any maintenance or anything, I could use some help over the highway.
Try to go with that.
Um, but that, but other than that, I was one pickup that's been on work for over years, finally showing up, so.
Excellent. That's good, then, we've done, can't miss it, though.
Right.
Hey, I asked you the other day, it was, and the brand was coming in by the end of the month and I'm going out the door, so you got a brand to pick up, you know what he told me?
Huh?
That one's gonna live, okay, I'm taking yours. I got it, we're all good for it.
See, there you go, there you go. Cool, all right, thanks, Tim. Uh, fire, chief?
Well, cold weather obviously changes our, our routine, you gotta slow down a little bit, can't be rushing, because if you rush, one slip on the ice, we've had experiences, it's not well, it was over the years, so it's, you know, and, and, you know, we're, we're we're still busy, we're still having people drive on that, and we're still having the, uh, unusual situations of sprinkled pipes breaking in, in residential areas, and that's always provides for time, because there's water everywhere.
Oh.
And, but, you know, other than that, we're, we're maintaining status quo, I guess, and we haven't had a big fight, you know, I'm so thankful.
Oh, I'm not, I'm like, oh, we don't need any more of that.
Well, that's why they're gonna tell us.
That's what I was saying, every time he gets called, I guess, I think about that, damn, look at.
Sixteen below every day.
I know.
First hose line, those people went right up their ass.
I know.
Of course, so it's, you know.
I remember it.
We're reminding and just slowing down a few seconds. Make sure your footing's good, make sure you're not over your.
Yeah.
You know, we'll be all right.
Good, okay, thanks. Uh, for myself, like I said, we'll get it, we'll get to the M T O D, the streetscape and the road procedures that are next meeting. Since it's gonna be a light being, you know, even if those other ones come out, we'll look at those, we'll make that our organizational meeting. Okay, that's all from me, um, anybody on the board? Adrian?
Just because the firefighter brought up the hotel on ninety-six.
You got doors and windows in.
Oh, yeah, but then all the white plastics blowing off the building and stuff there, whatever is right up.
Okay, is that a problem?
Huh?
That problem?
You don't think so? I mean, I like to see the product done, it's been like ten years now, it feels like.
Well, they like to do these multiple times over there, so we'll have to pull that back out. We'll be okay.
But, that's our first.
Aaron?
I love it.
Tim?
I'm all good.
Motion to adjourn by Adrian, seconded by Tim, all in favor?
Hi.
All right. Yeah, I, look at that.